Okay. So Prabhu Giri, both Samse, our president and Kerala's unique region has taken care of activities. So we are very fortunate to speak on various topics much short after speaker. So it is a good fortune we have Prabhu here with us.
Om Namah Bhagavatam.
So please things to know that particularly studying the Brahman consists of how we think of process. Better than Shri. But beauty of the Brahman. It has a lot of oral essence. On push. Suppose you see Shriman Bhagavatam speaks about push. Brahman along with Patti, there are many I think. How to respect elders, respect guru. Or wife serving husband, husband taking care of wife. Serving parents. And especially Aranya Katta. There are lot of lessons in Aranya Katta. One important lesson in the first half of Aranya Katta is one Namaan the lesson. How to handle ourselves when there is lot of challenges and disappointments. We have disappointments. How to handle them? Second part of Aranya Katta teacher. He must uncontrollable love. Teedil. There are so many other lessons that these two are right. Aranya don't wanna forest. Forests are always in pure Satvik. Villages are majestic like. Cities are domestic. That is why those days sages will seek shelter of deeper banks. Ocean. Or wanna forest. You won't see a single line in Bhakwad. Where the sages went to city and sat down for thanks. Why? Louder. Can we come close? And the rest of you also. Am I audible now? So forests are always in the platform of good. Satvik. Villages, jungle, fills passion. Cities are domestic. Because while jungle is the mode of goodness, first thing is we are not there. Lot of animals. Human percentage is very less. And the chances for breaking regulatory principles are also very less in chapter. Because people don't feel. So forests are always charged with divinity and order. So if Aranya Kanta, it's a journey of Ram, Lakshmana and Sita. Moving from one jungle to another. They went to Chitraput. Then from there they moved to Dantakaranya. Then there is Janasatta, something like that, the jungle, Janasthana. Then from there they move to Panchavati. So except Mother Sita, everyone was upset. That our beautiful lords have spent their time to check the protein. Sita Mata is so happy because she is getting Ram completely wholesale. Nobody to disturb. So nice. Well, everything in Padmapuram. Lakshmi Devi won't take complaint to Narayana. I don't get time with you at all. You're all the time with the Bhagavat. Me devotee come just give me a phone. Do Mataji's complaint like this at home to their husbands. You know, you don't pay attention, you don't take care of children, you know? Don't worry because it all started from Lakshmi. She complained to Narayana that you are not paying attention. So Lord Narayana told Lakshmi Devi, don't worry, now we are all alone. Pretty to eat. We are alone. Then Lakshmi said, who said you are alone? Turn back and see a person with 1,008 and 2,000 eyes are watching. Who's that? Not from Allah. Honest message. Narayana is lying on. With 1,008 and 2,000 eyes is watching us. So how do you say we are alone? So this is one complaint, Mother Sita, Lakshmi Devi. Even after marrying the wife. All the time, all the king way duties, that they did cities and pathetic sage of the Brahman. So when they moved to jungle, Mother Sita was so happy. She kept on thanking Kaikei again and again. The oneingly problem she had, why it was reduced to 14? So they were. The same time. Somewhere, Mother Sita felt a bit insecure. Because sages will come and take shelter of her, say such and such, Rakshasa is disturbing us. He is disturbing, you know, there are different kinds of Rakshas of the jungle. They trouble over the how, they trouble over medication. So Ram will give word to those sages, don't worry. So this conversation between sages, you know, makes Mother Sita little worried. She's always worried about this Rakshas coming attacking and all. So that is how Aranya Kanta starts. So there the Acharyas explain. Ram was very happy in jungle, content in jungle. Then some mistakes happen in our life. In which we are not directly responsible. Please understand it is karmic reaction and don't react, allow it to pass. Is that clear? If the mistake happened from our hand, from our involvement directly. Then we should be worried. If that is something happening and we don't have any control over the situation. It just happened like that, so just understand it is reaction of karma. And we have to be patient and allow the time to pass. For example, we are all from India. And you know India's traffic and how the vehicles go in India. Here we have signal. Red means stop, yellow means wait, green means you go. In green means you go. Yellow means you go very fast. Red means if police is not there, you go. Full meaning of signals are different in India, right? So imagine you are walking on the street. And if a vehicle comes and hits you in the front, you are involved. You have eyes, you could have moved or you could have walked by the side of road. You are also involved. Suppose you are walking and you don't, you are not even aware there is a vehicle coming behind you. And you are walking on the side of the road and the vehicle comes and hits you. It is simply karmic reaction. So when Lord Ram was banished in jungle for 14 years. Was there any mistake from Ram's side? From Lakshmana's side, from Mother Sita's side? No. So Ram simply surrendered to destiny. Thank you very much. Hold for me. Hare Krishna. I'll speak like. After all. Okay. So where did I stop? Yeah, there was no mistake from Ram's side. There is a similar comparison in Mahabharata. Exactly like this. One day, Kunti Maharani with tears in her eyes, she asked Vidura, what mistake we did? Vishya, my children were fed with poison. Maha Agni, when they were sleeping, they were, their whole house was in fire. Vishan, Mahabali, Usha, the Darshan. Every day, different kinds of demons and people were attacking us. Asat Savaya in a wrong assembly, daughter-in-law was insulted. On top of all these things, one of us has sent them, sent us to 12 years jungle. What mistake we have done? And Vidura said a beautiful answer, my dear Maharani Kunti. I don't have answer for your question. But I know how to handle the situation. Please answer me the difference between upavas and starving. Fasting and starving, what is the difference between fasting and starving? Yes, question.
That's our choice.
Yeah.
Because we want to serve the Lord. So we go through that inconvenience to get a higher purpose.
Correct.
And starving is something that is not your choice. But it has been just given of you because of your karmic reactions.
Perfect answer. Fasting is my choice, starving is pushed upon me, right? So when I fast, I don't feel the pain. But when I starve, Hare, 12 o'clock, what happened to my lunch? One o'clock, no lunch, two, no lunch, you know, you are into trouble. So Vidura said, now convert that starving into fasting. You won't feel pain at all. Don't think that they have banished you to jungle for 12 years. Please Maharani Kunti, you teach your children, these 12 years are going to be the time for sacrifice, tapas. You know, time to earn all the merits, benefits. Conver, a little correction, you will not feel the pain of one of us. So same way Ram told Lakshmana, because Lakshmana was complaining. If I get Bharata, I will rip him apart. I will peel his skin and hang him at the entrance of Ayodhya Ko shallow. Every day, you know, Lakshmana used to get angry. Then Ram would say, we can't. This is a time for tapas. So the 14 years, every day, Mother Sita, Lord Ramchandra, they can't lot of tapas. She served Anusuya Saty, all in Chitraput, learned how to serve Lord Ram. She was so happy. Every day, Mother Sita will run to Anusuya's ashram. And Mother Anusuya will teach how to serve Lord, how to serve Ram, what is a duty, what is? She was so happy, learning from sages. The greatest lesson, nobody else in this world can teach exactly. Yeah. Okay, I can't speak Hindi, my Hindi is such.
Hey, can somebody translate in the back or you want a translation straight on? Ateji? Can one of the ladies translate for them? The translation will slow you down, that's why.
Oh, okay. Yo, how many of you can't? Kitna log hai Hindi, English jo samajhte nahi?
Okay.
Only four?
No, zero.
Five, okay. Should we go parallelly or should somebody translate?
I'll, I'll translate if, if somebody is not able to translate there, then I'll translate. Ateji, can you do, Anju Mateji, can you do the translation? Karan? Go, go there, just move into the, because it will slow him down in half. We'll get 50% nectar.
So. So in the beginning of Aranya Kanda, they are moving from, they were in Dantakaranya. So each vana, the story of that vana, why that vana is like that, everything will be explained in Ramay. He will ask the sages, why this jungle is called Dantakaranya? What has happened in the past? Who were all the sages lived here? Ram was so curious to know about the details of every place. And Valmiki says, that is how we should go for pilgrimage. When you go for pilgrimage, you should go unprepared. Unprepared, right? You should not inform. When you do charity, when you do sacrifice, when you go on a pilgrimage, you should go unprepared. Because he will completely surrender to Lord. Like in those days, earlier days, we used to go for book distribution. Every moment, they will be praying Krishna, make this man buy a book, make that person buy a book, you know?
Can I also request all the mobiles, please pick them up and put them on silent? Thoda mobile ko chup kara de. Sorry.
So. When we go on a pilgrimage, we should surrender to sadhus in that area. And request them, please tell us what has happened here, what is the lela? And that lela and the philosophy behind that lela will be so effective, there will be a transformation. Otherwise Prabhu Pat said, it is like Karela going to Kashi. Imagine you take carry a Karela go to Kashi. With the Karela in Gangga, bring it back, make sabji, will the bitterness disappear? So we simply go and come back, what have you seen? I have seen this, I have taken 20 selfies and this and that. Have you heard the Mahima of that place? No, unprepared, right? This is what happened, there is a parallel to this in Bhakwad. Like one day Vidura came and met Dhrithrastra. And asked Dhrithrastra, how are you? Dhrithrastra said, I am so happy. Yudhishra is taking care of me so nicely. I don't feel any pain at all. Vidura said, hell with you. Lost hundreds of sons and you are simply enjoying. But somehow Dhrithrastra could not get that detachment at all. Purana says. Three stages of life. Tender coconut, coconut and the dry coconut. What do you say for dry coconut in Hindi?
Cobra.
Cobra. Cobra. See, in the dry stage, the coconut is, it's completely detached from the shell, it is inside the shell, not detached. So when we cross a particular stage of life, the soul should be inside the body, but it Padma Patrami Vambasa, like a lotan, unattached, right? So but here Dhrithrastra is so attached, even his hundreds of sons are killed. He told Vidura, I am so happy. Vidura kept on preaching to him, advising. Dhrithrastra could not realize. Finally Vidura spoke a heavy statement. You are eating what is spit by Bima. Whatever Bima has spat, you are eating that. You know? And next day morning, Dhrithrastra is not there in palace. So Prabhu Pat said, our Japa should be effective Japa, he has used this word, effective hearing, effective Japa. You know, this is what is effective. Next day morning, Arjuna came running and telling Yudhishra, you know, he is not, Dhrithrasra is not there, Gandhari is not there. Kunti Mahar, our mother is also not there. Then Yudhishra Maharaja asked, is uncle Vidura there? He said, no, he is also not there, so don't worry. They have all gone towards not. But Arjuna said, no, no, they are elderly, they need help, we should go and bring them back or we should help, send support. Then Yudhishra said, when you go for liberation, you should go uninformed. And the same thing Yudhishra also did. The moment Yudhishra heard Krishna left the planet, Yudhishra made Parikshit the king and he started, he didn't even inform his brothers. That is how a sacrifice should be done. That is how a charity should be done. We also do like that, we don't tell anybody, just publish in Facebook. He went uninformed. So this is how a pilgrimage is. So Ram told Lakshmana, this is beautiful. We are going to practice all the sacrifice and this and that and we will get merits. Why are you worried? This 14 years are time for joy, to earn merits of spirituality. Then they met a great sage called Sharabanga. Sharabanga means a man who destroyed his body. Such a great tapasvi he was, very great tapasvi. He has done all kinds of tapas and charity and this and that. Indra came to Sharabanga's ashram and said, you have an invitation, your place is ready in Brahmalok, please do come. You know? It's like suppose you get an invitation, free invitation to Brahmalok, would you like to go or not?
Yes.
Yes? Sorry. Imagine you get a free visa, stay everything in America for two months in Starboard, will you go or not? Yes.
Yes, there everybody will go party.
Not Brahmaloka. Thank you for being honest. So Sharabanga rejected because it is not a normal thing to reject. Because the moment you enter Janoloka, Tapoloka and Brahmaloka, you get Ashtasiddhi. Ashtasiddhi means you can become smaller than an atom, you can become invisible. Wow, nobody can see you, you will become invisible, you can move around. Yes? You can be mightier than the mightiest, you can become lighter than air, Ashtasiddhi. But Sharabanga, she said, no, I am not coming. I wanted to attain the lotus feet of Lord. He said, I am not coming. It, you, you, you need to have a big solid determination to say no to all that. Sharabanga said, no. Then the beautiful lesson is there, Lord Ram came. That when moment Lord Ram came, Sharabanga ran and surrendered to Lord Ram and said, Ram, just now Indra came and left. He had an invitation for me to Brahmalok. I said, nothing doing gets lost. You know, I want to surrender to you. I said, you know, was that a right attitude? Was that a right attitude? Lord Ram said, even I don't need you. Somewhere Sharabanga had a small ego, that I am a great person. Many times our Guru Dev, spiritual masters have said, you stand on the weighing machine. It shows 70 kilo, 80 kilo. 250 grams is your weight, rest is head weight. Because when we die, we are burnt to ashes. What is our quantity? You will be filled in a mud pot, maximum 250 gram, maybe 500 gram, is that? So Guru, Guru Dev used to say, rest is head weight. So somewhere Sharabanga felt, I am a great tapasvi. Even I rejected Brahma's invitation. Then when Lord Ram said, no, no, I don't need you. You just show me the place, what is that name, Prabhu, Jana?
Janasta.
Janasta. Just show me the direction, how to go to Janastha. Such a great sage coming with so much merits and saying, I am this and that, I reject. Lord Ram said, I don't need your help, I just show me the direction. Then Sharabanga was deeply thinking, what is wrong with you? Why Lord Ram rejected me? There should be some reason. Then he was pondering, thinking again and again and again. Very important Krishna told Uddava. na graha karma khalaaha, don't blame planets, time, karma, nothing. Manaparam karana ma mananti samsara chakram parivarta yethiyat. I, I, my mind is the reason for everything. My enemy is not somewhere else. I am the reason for all my pain in life. Because Sharabhanga was such a great sage, he could, he could, uh, do research, what went wrong with me? What mistake I did? Then he surrendered. Then he spoke so much of glories about vana. Then Lord Ram accepted him. Then Ram further moved. So they spoke about the great sage Agastya. Let us see, whatever we can touch, we can. So move to Agastya. So Lord Ram asked, please, please tell me, I want to hear the glories of great sage Agastya. You've all been to, uh, Kedar Nath, Badrinath, many of you? So there is a place called Triyuginirayan Temple, where Madarsya Parvati and Mahadev, Lord Shiva got married. The whole universe went to attend that marriage. So Lord Shiva told Agastya, everybody has gathered, gathered in one place, so the balance of the planet will be improper, you go down to south and balance it. So Agastya alone made, he didn't attend the marriage. He alone, you can understand the power of Agastya. Alone, he stood and balanced. So when Ram heard this, please tell me more glories about Agastya, I want to hear, I want to hear. So when we go on a pilgrimage, Tiirtastan, we should be hankering to hear, what is the glory of this place, what has happened, let me do Kiirtan, let me jump and dance, but let me realize the glory. That is how it should be. So they said, Ram heard the pastimes of Agastya. One day Agastya came from meditation. He saw dead bodies hanging upside down in tamarind tree and screaming Agastya's name. Dead bodies, all hanging upside down in tamarind tree and screaming Agastya, Agastya, Agastya. Agastya thought, who are these people? And all dead bodies talking to me and how do they know my name, how they are, they are talking? And yes, who are you? And all the dead bodies said, we are your grandfathers. You know, then Agastya asked, what, what happened, why are you all hanging upside down? So they said, because you have not done the rites for us, they are still hanging like this. Very important. When our forefathers, ancestors pass away, the sons, son-in-law, grandsons, they are all supposed to do, if nothing, minimum eleven to sixteen days, uh, this ceremony. Ceremony in the sense, chant more names for Krishna, read all the holy scriptures, feed cows, do little charity to Brahman, very important. Sixteen days, for Brahman it is eleven days, that, that, all that ritual, whatever ceremony. If we don't do, see what happens, uh, the moment we die, the soul leaves through one of the gates of this body. Our body has nayan gates, nabadwaray puraydehi. And it is true, animals in that area will understand. I don't know how many of you are from Gau villages. If somebody is about to die, you can see the dog howling instead of barking. Cow breaking the rope and just escapes from that place. Birds all will shatter and flew away from, they will fly from the trees. Anybody has experienced these things? Many of you. Why? Except the person who is about to die. And all their living entities can see the Yamadutas come. And they are very handsome. The moment you see, you will lose your life. They're so scary, copper colored hair, copper colored eyes and they'll come like that. And they are merciless. And their vehicle is buffalo. Very beautiful one, they'll bring, you know, with a long horns. So they come and snatch the soul from the body, the more they are attached, the more painful it will be. Imagine uprooting a blade of gra- a grass plant and a banyan tree, which is easier. That's why banyan is tough. The roots will be in the next village also, the banyan tree roots can go hundreds and hundreds of meter, you can't uproot. So when our attachment is so deep, the time of death will be painful. The Yamaduta, am I scaring you? The Yamadutas will come and hold the atma and snatch it, right? So the person who is about to die is seen and talking about those people who don't chant, who are not surrendered to God, who are non-devotees. In the case of devotees, it is different. He has all the time eaten meat and drunk and, you know, broken principles. So what happens, the soul leaves through one of the gates and you can see there will be a small drop of blood also. That means the soul has gone. If it is an yogi, if the person is an yogi, Brahmarandra will open, we all have Brahmarandra. It will open and the soul will leave. For him, no birth, right? I'm not talking about devotees, I'm talking about other class of people. So this person can see Yamadutas, what he will do, he will grab the hand if you are standing next to him. Or he will catch the cot, he will, you know, hold on like that and Yamadutas will snatch the soul away. Then the journey to Pathal, where the cot is, you know, that's where the cot is. The last one, the Netherland, the seventh planet down from Earth, from Bhuloka. It takes eleven to four, sixteen days to reach there. And there is punishment and all these things. At that time, the person is waiting, what my son is doing? Is he chanting God's name? Whatever punya his son does, his father will get less punishment. So the, the soul is hankering, what my son is doing? Is he praying to God? He is keeping upvas, he is chanting Krishna's name, he is feeding Brahman, is he reading Ramayan? He is so busy because he doesn't get a leave, sixteen days. He is so busy, so what happens, the father feels pain. What an unfortunate son I have got. So these souls, after punishment in Naraka Loka, they are transferred to Pitr Loka, where Aryama is the king and they are waiting for a human body. Waiting in the queue is the most restless thing to do in life. Have you ever stood in a queue? Have you got this experience, your queue alone doesn't move, all the other queue? Have you got this experience? Why, I don't know it. For me, it always happens, my, our queue doesn't move, all the other queue moves. And somehow your queue will move and the moment you reach the counter, they close and go. So when you stand in a queue, we become restless, even though we don't have anything great to do. So the atma is waiting, when will I get a human body? So when Agastya saw, all these bodies were hanging upside down and they were saying, you didn't do any rituals, any rites for us and we didn't get any, you know, we are not promoted to next to say, we are in Pitr Doshah, please do something. Then Agastya said, there are only two remedies. What are the two remedies? I should dedicate myself to Krishna Narayana completely. Then they will get liberated. Or I should do all the proper rituals which is explained in Vedas. Which one you want? They said, you get married, produce children, do puja, haven, everything. Then Agastya decided to get married. So he asked the sages, he asked the Brahma. The Brahma said, okay, you get married. Then Agastya had some condition. The lady whom I am getting married should be non-envious. She should not have, you know, zero percent envy. Respect everyone in this world. No competitive mentality. Tolerate any negative situation. Satvik, please, Brahma said, I have not created anybody like you. There is no one in this place. So you create yourself. You know, because Agastya is a very powerful person. You know, with all your combination, you make one. So he made one perfect lady. Her name was Lopamudra. Zero envy, perfect! And the moment Lopamudra said, Lopamudra said, if you want to marry me, I have condition. Then Agastya said, what is this? You know, I made a perfect person and the perfect person is also having condition. Brahma said, that doesn't happen like that, right? So it's a beautiful story of Agastya. Agastya's journey, how he satisfied the conditions of all. In this way, Lord Ram heard all the things about Agastya and they learnt a lot of lessons. Now they move to Panchavati. So many things happened in between also. When they moved to Panchavati, they saw all the creatures, birds and rabbits and deer running, you know, hither and they go scared of something. They were all running in different direction and there is a heavy, you know, moaning noise. And even Lakshmana took his bow and arrow and they are all ready. And Ram said, wait, 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 you know? Don't, don't jump into conclusions, let us see what it is. And they slowly entered the jungle. They saw a mighty huge vulture lying down, you know? I don't know whether you have seen Himalayan vulture and all, it's like, it's like a size of a calf it is. And if it spreads its wing, it will be like ten feet long, the wings, so big it is. Easily it will carry a goat or something and fly up in the sky, huge ones. So in those days, you can imagine the size of vulture. It was, it is lying down like that. And immediately Lakshmana took his bow and arrow, this, this vulture, this is so scary, I'm going to shoot, you know? And Ram said, wait, 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 he is murmuring something. So they went closer. The vulture is saying, Ram, Ram, Ram. Jataju does, Jataju, one of the greatest devotee. But he was thousands and thousands of years old. He can't see, he can't hear, very old he is. He can't even hunt his prey, so weak and old. And moment Lord came closer, Jataju could feel, that's his lord. And Jataju opened his eyes and screamed and with tears flowing down, he was chanting Ram's name again and again and again. And Ram asked, who are you? And said, I am your devotee Jataju. So there Acharyas ask a question, if Ram is Supreme Lord, can't he identify who's who? But in this lela, just to enrich the pastime, Jataju will say, I am your father's friend. So once, when Dashartha waged a war against demons, Jataju went to help Dashartha in the war. Then Dashartha said, what boon you, what, what we want in return? Then Jataju said, I don't have children. Dashartha said, even I don't have children. At that time Ram has not taken birth. Then Jataju said, no, if at all you have children, just make an arrangement. When I leave my body, he should come and do the final this thing. Then Dashartha gave a word to Jataju. He may, if I have a son, he may not do my final rites, but I'll make sure he will do your final rites. And that literally happened. Amazing, each lesson is amazing. So what happened, Jataju became so happy. Then Laksh- Ram told Lakshmana, this is Jataju. We have heard so much about his name from our father. So they became so happy. And within moments, Sita became close with Jataju. Because Jataju was so pure, he attracted Mother Sita and Sita became so friendly with Jataju, that scary vulture. But Sita became fearless. Sita started talking and they spent a lot of time every day. And Jataju developed such a beautiful affection towards Mother Sita. When all this is going on, Shurpanaka was searching for a husband. She had an husband, you know? So we, we should know how the relationship is. Uh, Ravana's mother Kaikasi, she was a demon, not demon, Asuri, Asura, Rakshasi. Ravana's mother Kaikasi is a Rakshasi. She had two husbands. One is sage Vishravas, another Rakshasa husband also, she had two, one is sage and Rakshasa. In sage, she got Ravana, Kumbhakarna, Vibeshina, Shurpanaka, all that. In the demon side, she got Kara, Tushana, so many demons. You got that thing, the graph? So see, Shurpanaka had many brothers. She had brothers from sage father, she had brothers from Rakshasa father, all kinds of combination. You see this, in a battle, by mistake, Ravana killed his own brother-in-law. This guy came to help him, you know? So Shurpanaka's husband was helping Ravana, this is what the mentality of Rakshasa. Very selfish. They worry only about themselves and nothing else. In the war, in between the war, by mistake, he killed his own brother-in-law. Then Shurpanaka said, Ravana, my dear brother, how could you do this, this is unfair? Ravana didn't even bother to answer Shurpanaka, he said, okay, bye, mistake, I will go. Such a powerful person was Ravana, he didn't even pay attention to his sister. So she fought with Ravana and came and stayed with the other brothers in Panchavati, Karathushna, you got it? That is how Shurpanaka came from, from Lanka to Panchavati. Panchavati is such a beautiful place. A land of tapas. How many of you have been to Panchavati? Oh, many. Land of tapas. Why land of tapas? Lord Shiva plucked one head of Brahaj. That's a big story, whatever. Lord Shiva pulled out one head of Brahma and Lord Shiva felt, okay, I did a mistake. So he came to Panchavati for tapas. Gautama Rishi did a mistake, he came to Panchavati for tapas. Indra did a mistake, he came to Panchavati for tapas. So Panchavati is a land of tapas. So Ram decided to stay in Panchavati. And that is the time, Shurpanaka is hunting for a husband. You know, she very badly wanted a husband, she was searching. And when she came, she saw a sage, so handsome, green color. Eyes are all like lotus petals extended up to the ears. Such a broad, broad forehead, very tall, majestic. Earrings made of rudraksha in his ears and matted hair, walking like a mad elephant. Narrow nick, narrow hip and broad chest. In Tamil, there is a beautiful line. So beautiful, green color. Have you ever seen anybody in green color? His green body and eyes are all like that and you know, so majestic, so royal. The way he walks, the way he talks, every word is just mercy flowing. Even a evil person listen to that personality, his heart will melt. Everybody, not even human, animals, bird, swan, peacock, they all don't leave this person, go around, keep on licking him, you know? Everyone loves to be in company. And who's that person? Shurpanaka, who's that person? And there is no mistake when Shurpanaka fell in love with Ram. No wonder, you know? She also liked him. So she went and somewhere, the whole lela, that is the only time Ram was, he did a small thing away from Ram. There is no mistake in Ram's life. But when Ram saw Shurpanaka, Ram thought, let me have fun, because that is how she came. She was a demoness, Rakshasi. Shurpanaka means long nails and the nails are all multicolored. And she had copper colored hair. What we call fashion nowadays was Shurpanaka. Ramayana says she had all the curly, what, what, what do you call this? Ah, eyelash, all like this, like this, curly and it goes like this, like that. So that is a definition of Shurpanaka, right? And watch, amazing Ramayana explained, she had a, the, the moment she was deeply in love with Ram, unknowingly she turned into a beautiful dancer, a beautiful lady. The thought of Ram transferred her. The thought of Ram transferred her, which is true. See, now you all devotees, you take your old picture, you know, before coming to Krishna conscious. I am sure there's a big difference, you can, you can see the present one and the past one. You will see a Ravana standing there. Complete transformation, yes or no? Yeah, now everybody looks like Vaikuntavasi, so handsome, beautiful. So Shurpanaka was deeply thinking of Ram and suddenly she transformed. Just by a momentary thought of Ram transforms a person. Imagine about a person who constantly chances holy name, what a transformation. So what she did, she became so beautiful and it is explained so nicely, she had long braided hair. And she took her hand, hair in the left hand and she was rotating the hair like that. And she was walking and walking and came to Ram. And the moment Ram saw something, Ram felt, let me have a fun, you know, the way she walked. Then she said, oh handsome, what are you doing in the jungle, wasting your youth? I know every place of Panchavati, all the jungles, pools, streams, rivers, everything, the beautiful honey dripping garden. Why don't you come with me, we will have fun? Then Ram said, I am already married. But the person sitting on the tree, he is not married. That is the only lie Ram has spoken in entire life. Like all of us, he's never spoken a lie.
But then why is he called Purushotham if he has spoken one lie?
That is like, it, it, it enhances the beauty of Leela, you know? But Acharyas will give a big explanation after that, why, what it is. So he just said, that person is not married, you can approach him. Then Shurpanaka was also very decent. She thought, okay, he is married, so why I should? So she also walked the same way to Lakshmana. And Lakshmana is wondering, why Ram said like that, I'm already married, my wife is there? But when Ram smiled, Lakshmana understood, you know, it's a joke. Then Laksh- but Lakshmana spoke the honest truth, he said, Shurpanaka, oh great beautiful lady, look both of us. Who is the best? He is the best. I am the second best. Do you think you should settle for the second best? Shurpanaka thought forever, what you say is also right only. Why should I settle for second best, I'll go for the best. Again she walked. In this way, Ram and Lakshmana had fun. They made Shurpanaka walk up and down a few times. And at that time, Mother Sita heard some female conversation, who in the jungle, all of a sudden, some female has come. So she came out, you know? Then Ram said, this is my wife, Sita Janaki. But the moment Shurpanaka saw the beauty of Janaki, she was like molten gold. Have you ever seen gold in a liquid form? Have you seen? You can try at home. Melt some gold. It is self effulgent, you don't need external light. The gold is self effulgent. Mother Sita is so beautiful, so tender, so humble. Immediately Shurpanaka's jealous burned, you know? This is one quality which is dangerous. All other qualities we can connect in Bhakti. Anger, we can somehow connect in Bhakti. Ego also, we can convert into this thing as Bhakti. Everything can be connected. One quality cannot be connected in Bhakti, which is dangerous to Bhakti is?
Jealousy.
Jealous. She became envious looking at the beauty. She came running, screaming and caught the neck of Mother Sita. And Sita did not expect this. All of a sudden, you know, immediately she grew into that Shurpanaka form. You know, Mother Sita got scared, she came and caught her neck. Then immediately Lakshmana got alarmed. From there, he threw his weapon, you know, that's how her nose and everything got cut. She screamed with pain and she ran. So then she went in, what's the time? We have some more, can we mark? It's eight fifty. Okay, eight fifty, okay. Then she went and complained to Karathushna, her brothers. They came, the whole Ramayana explained, the whole world till today has never seen a battle like Ram with Karathushna. Because Karathushna, the brothers of Shurpanaka came with fourteen thousand men, soldiers, fourteen thousand demons. Then Lakshmana immediately pulled his weapon, Mother Sita got scared because she already had this feeling, you know, people attacking and all. So Ram said, Lakshmana, take care of Mother Sita and move certain yojanas away. Somewhere Ram felt, my dear, Sita had seen everything from me, not my valor. Sita has witnessed Ram's words. Sita had witnessed Ram's love. Sita had witnessed Ram's generosity, charity, seva, the ruling, the everything. But Sita had never seen Ram fighting. So Ram thought, let her see this. What a performance. Lord alone stood in the middle. Fourteen thousand soldiers attacking, Lord, world like Sudarshan Chakra. Chopping their heads and throwing their heads to the ocean. There was blood spluttering, the whole land turned into blood, right? Killing fourteen thousand people, even Lakshmana like, wow. Even Lakshmana had on scene, right? So somebody asked, why so much of bloodshed in a holy book? Ramayana, this is also part of the Lord. Then Lord wanted to fight, there is no one equal. So he sent his own men, Jayaviijaya, come, I want to have some fighting program, you know, sent his own people. One day he felt like, you know, little scratch, he want, itch feeling, you know, somebody should scratch, he took a tortoise avatar. Came and went underneath that Manthara mountain, you know? So it's all pastime. So amazing fight for the killing fourteen thousand soldiers. And chapters and chapters of Ramayana explains how he killed each one. Said, you know, Lakshmana was taken a bag. And there is a beautiful line Lakshmana says. Arrow, a word and deed never loses value from Ram. Means, arrow will never miss its lakshya from Ram. If Ram sends an arrow, it will never miss its goal. If Ram had spoken a word, it will be truth. If Ram has doing something, it will be the highest activity, dharma. So spoke a beautiful shloka and killed and Shurpanaka ran from that place. Now the other brothers were killed, now only shelter is?
Ravana.
Ravana. She went to Ravana, you know? She kept on saying, your brothers were killed, fourteen thousand soldiers were killed. You know, Ravana didn't even bother to answer. He was so arrogant, so disgusting. He felt, even devas can't come and scratch me, what to speak about a normal king of some kingdom, some prince is. Who can do anything to me? Even Yama got scared with me in battle and ran away. I have fought with Lord Shiva, who can stand in front of me? So he doesn't pay any attention. Shurpanaka is telling, your brothers were killed, fourteen thousand soldiers were killed, they chopped my nose and this and that. Ravana didn't even pay. Then Shurpanaka was wondering how to get his attention. Shurpanaka said, you know why I went there? Ravana didn't even listen. Shurpanaka said, there is a beautiful lady apt for you. I went in seeking hand. Thak, Ravana opened his eyes. Really, who is that? So Ravana had lot of good qualities also, he was a demon, that's it. But this lust alone killed everything. That is why Bhagavad Gita and Bhagavatam again and again speaks about karma and krodha, so many shlokas. Karma yesa, krodha yesa, karma krodha, vimukta nam, karma is, tais, tais. So many shloka, again and again speaks about karma and krodha. Chanting the holy name, it's like receiving rain from Lord, it's the mercy of the Lord. And our sadhana is like a pot holding that. Karma and krodha is like making holes in the pot. That's all, all the rain water you hold and everything will drain, you know, every time. So the whole description of how karma krodha is affecting a saint is explained there. But then immediately Ravana started making plans. You know, that's a whole story of calling Mari Cha and kidnapping Mother Sita, you know? And Ravana very intelligent, he took this saffron and rishi sage sanyasi's plot. Because Mother Sita will believe, trust him. So he went in the ress of sanyasi. So it's a beautiful canto Aranya Kanda. There are two lessons, there are many lessons, two important lessons, one. When things goes wrong in our life, don't react. By adding fire to fire, we can never put out fire. If there is fire, we have to pour water, right? Action is same in this world, we make it worse by the way we react to it. You know, we make it worse. There is a beautiful thing from Socrates' life. Socrates was a very spiritually oriented man, he used to speak about soul, body and all like that. So whenever he speaks, his wife will get irritated. Because all the time he is sitting and talking and he will somehow gets four, get four, five friends also, they are all, the wife will get irritated and she will say, this man is one mad fellow. Somehow he gets another four, five mad people also, they're all sitting, you know? Every day, one day she lost her patience. She came with a big pot of water and Socrates was sitting with his friends and talking, Aathmatatva, something very great philosophy. She came and dropped the whole water on his head. And he smiled and said, till yesterday it was thundering, today it rained. You can understand the level of tolerance and self-control. Imagine you are there in that situation, what you would do? We will react. The level of self-control. So first part of Aranya Kanda, there will be so many negative situations. You should be tolerant because test means there is a result. Imagine a kid, how do we know a kid has properly studied? If somebody is studying tenth standard, how do we know whether he, he or she has properly studied? Exams. So the exams are not an obstacle in life, exams are stepping stone for the next level. But we all think challenges, obstacles mean it's an obstacle, no, it's not an obstacle. So if somebody passes seventh standard, immediately we say it's very good and put him in eighth. If he is intelligent, he should never pass in seventh, so he can always remain there. You pass, then they will throw you to eight, then nine, then ten, you go up and up, there, there are bigger tests. So tests are stepping stone to next level, we should be calm, we should be very deeply thoughtful, we should be devoted. We can come across. That's the first stage. And the second part of Aranya Kanda explains lust so deeply, how dangerous, how detrimental it is to spiritual life. Thank you very much, Hare Krishna. You have any questions or not do question?
Thank you so much for this wonderful class, Prabhuji. I have one question, you probably, you said there are two things, like one, the God gives us the pain or anything and one, we take by our, because of our improper senses. So how do we identify that whether it, what the reactions we get is from the God or it's from our own karma like that?
This is a very good question. In Bhagavad, there is Gajendra Mokshalela, okay? In the previous life, Gajendra was a king called Indradhyuna. One day he felt all this is maya, too much of attachment, he went to jungle. And he was deeply controlling his senses and meditating on paramatma in a deep meditation. At that time, Agastya was passing by with ten thousand disciples. And Agastya thought Maharaja Indradhyuna is sitting there and not paying any attention, not paying respect. So Agastya thought, till yesterday he was a king. Today, all of a sudden, he became a saint, he became so arrogant, mad like an elephant. I curse you that you become an elephant, arrogant elephant. After hearing the curse, Indradhyuna opened his eyes, he was not aware. So he was not at fault, but he was such a powerful person, intelligent, he thought, why Agastya should curse me? He is not a normal person, he is also a great saint. Neither I did any mistake, nor he could do mistake. So that means there should be something, purpose, there is some purpose behind this. So he deeply thought and he concluded with two answers. One, it must be my past karma. That the sage had cursed me, some past karma. Or it is simply Leela of the Lord. So he got up and went and bowed up to sage Agastya and said, oh great sage, I don't know why you cursed. But anyway, thank you so much for cursing because if it is karma, my, all my bad karma will get burnt. If it is Lord's Leela, I am so happy Lord has chosen me. So Agastya was moved by the answer. Then Agastya thought, he is not a normal person. Oh great Indradhyuna, I have cursed, but I can't take it back. But when you take birth as an elephant, Narayana will come, hold your hand and take you back to Vaikuntavasi. So then curse turned into blessing. Imagine if we were there, we will curse Agastya back. So we don't know why things are happening, but the reason either it would be karma or Lord's Leela. But in our case, most of it, it will be karma only. You know, because we are not so qualified to learn. But at any case, we should be patient, calm and take spiritual approaches. Thank you so much. Sheila Prabhu Padki. Thank you, I thank Nandu Prabhu for giving this wonderful opportunity also.
You've actually embellished, I think everybody will have a real synopsis of what's coming in this Kanda. Some of very important things and Prabhu so beautifully narrated, we feel like we were standing next to Shurpanaka, the knife just missed us. Uh, it's so beautifully narrated, so we're gonna have this from now, from the coming week onwards. Every week, we are going through one chapter in detail. So my request to everybody is, let's make, make it here to be able to go through Ramayan and invite these lessons. Uh, so that we are able to understand how to better our spiritual lives and our lives. Thank you, Prabhu, yeah? And thanks to Anju Mataji and Prabhuji. Big thanks for being such a, a large-hearted host, never thinks, if somebody is not hosting, then like her home is there, it's a big thing. Let's give her a hand for that. Uh, so this is, this will go on each week, in the next few weeks, we are also scheduled to have Vrindavan Chandramaraj. It will be a Zoom call. And then after that, we will have Saruvam Prabhu. Uh, possibly each month, we will have one luminary talking about it. The rest of the three classes would be the usual classes that we deal with. Uh, the last time, we started working on some of the Dhyanashlokas. We will learn all of the Dhyanashlokas, we can chant them together. Uh, and then we will go through. Each session, the chapter will also be sent to you, original verses and translations will be sent to you. So please be present, uh, make yourself available to bathe in this wonderful, uh, purifying Shrinab Ramayan. Valmikhe Ramayan Ki Jaya. Thank you very much. Uh, Vidyaagati Prabhu has been kind enough to bring these books from, uh,